It's live on tape.
Live on tape.
All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at Carrington School is hosting us, but we're here to hear from Bunker Hill Grammar School. We'd like to begin tonight with a moment of silence for two dear employees who passed away over the course of the past few weeks and our deepest sympathy to their families and friends and to all who knew these lovely women, Celita Billups and Maria Belles Gonzalez. Please keep them in your prayers. Commissioner O'Donoghue, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Pacoche, Principal of Bunker Hill Elementary School.
Testing, you can hear me? Oh. Okay, good evening, everyone, parents, faculty, our wonderful Board of Ed members, our new superintendent, Dr. Ruffin, all our commissioners, all our visitors. I want to welcome you all to Bunker Hill School, AKA Carrington School. We brought all our belongings with us. I just want to say, just if you could take a look to my right, we did want to present that at our school. We purposely put that together, our little one, two, three blocks and our pencils to show it's our little back-to-school prop for the meeting. So, we're going to be taking it back so Carrington doesn't get it, I have to tell Ms. Rena, but we will be using that tonight as our little prop. Some of my staff members are standing, are sitting right back here. I thank them for coming. They did bake for the Board of Ed, for all our commissioners, and I want to thank them. So, there's some goodies, homemade goodies there for you as well. We want to thank, again, my teachers, my staff, for all they do for me to make this presentation possible. My vice principal, Ms. Wilson, is behind the scenes over there on the stage, and she will be manning a computer. So, we will begin. I did put in, Commissioner, your packets, a copy of the PowerPoint we're going to be doing tonight. And first, we start off with our mission at Bunker Hill School. And our mission at Bunker Hill School is very simple. It's that all members of our community at Bunker Hill will be treated with respect and upheld to high expectations. It's very simple, very brief, but I think it encompasses everything that we do at school. And our vision is a little bit longer, and it is to establish and maintain an alliance among students, parents, community, administration, teachers, and staff by improving the education offered to our students in order to prepare them for their future. And our vision ties in very nicely with our presentation tonight, which is a portrait of a graduate. We, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but our fifth graders, since it's the beginning of the year, decided what they think they should know in order to graduate from high school to go to college. So, we did a little PD with our administrators beginning of the year, and we carried it down to the students, but again, I will speak to that shortly. What I would like to do right now is to show everyone a little bit about what we did last year as far as our testing, our smarter balance. It's no surprise, we do struggle at Bunker Hill with our scores. As you can see, from 2014 up to 2018, we have third, fourth, and fifth grade, and this is an ELA, so this is our reading. So, as you can see, from 2014 in third grade, we did take quite a dip, even from last year. So, we know we have work to do, but again, as we go along with the slides, you'll see an improvement overall with our school. Fourth grade, we're happy to say that they went up quite a bit from the, even though we are low, we're going in the right direction. So, I was very pleased with the fourth grade ELA scores on our smarter balance last year. Fifth grade, again, did very well. Again, we are low, but we're moving in the right direction. So, I was very happy to see that we're going in the right direction in reading, and we are getting support from our ELA department, working with our third grade teachers and our students on ELA. We are getting a new curriculum this year, which hasn't started yet, but I'm sure we'll see an improvement as well as the year goes on. Our math smarter balance, very pleased with our math scores this year. As you can see, last year, we had, in third grade, we were down to 16.8 percent, and now we're up to 27.5 percent. Again, we are low to start with, but we're moving in the right direction, and I'm very pleased to see that, and that's third grade. Fourth grade, we went down a little bit, but again, we're not too far, and we do have a whole new fourth grade teaching crew this year. We did move some teachers around, and we have some new teachers, so we're very pleased with that, and we will see, I'm sure, an improvement with that, with the fourth grade math. And then, fifth grade, we were very low, and it's no, you know, that's not a surprise to us, we knew that, but look the growth that they made, almost, well, 12 percent. So, I'm very pleased with that, and again, we are working in the right direction. We have a lot of work to do, and I know that, but we have a lot of support as well from downtown central office and from my coaches in school that work with us. And then, my next slide shows overall all the grades, and you can see an improvement with all the grades. So, in math, this is a combination of the third, fourth, and fifth. Some grades carried over, so it made it a little bit nicer for us to make growth. And as you can see, in math, we went from 18 percent, I think it's 18 percent to 24 percent, so we did make growth there. And in literacy, we went from 22.8 percent, and it won't show up for some reason on the PowerPoint, but that is 26.8 percent. So, we went up 4 percent there. So, again, we are moving in the right direction, but, you know, we did improve this year. So, we just wanted to share that little bit overall with you. We do have, so going into the next portion of our PowerPoint, we are talking about Portrait of a Graduate, and I want to just preface and say, well, what is that? You know, we just didn't take it out of thin air. Well, we went back to our PD in August, all the administrators. This was something that was given to us. We saw a video on what a portrait of a graduate looks like, and then we came together as sections. So, we had the west end, the east end, the north end, and we came together as schools, and we had to decide what we thought as administrators a student should know to be a graduate, what should they do, and what qualities they should possess, what characteristics. So, we did that as administrators, and there's many stakeholders in this. There's the parents, there's the administration, there's the students, okay? And so, there were a lot of stakeholders as well, but we're, since we just got back to school, we're only focusing on the students right now. So, we went in and asked some of our fifth graders to do the same exercise that we did. Yes. Oh, I thought someone was calling me. I'm hearing voices. Oh, my God. So, we did that, and they all did a great job. Unfortunately, we couldn't pick everybody. We did pick 10 students, and five of them were able to come with us tonight, so we're very happy for that. So, we do have a little video, just to give you an idea. Hopefully, it'll come through and show you what it is we're working on. Okay. All set? Okay. This video was quite apropos, because we did get our new science program this year as well, and there was a lot to do with science and hands-on, so I think it's, we're stepping in the right direction with that. What I would like to do is just let you know, moving on to the next slide, is just what we did when we were as administrators at the PG. And we, the west end teachers, administrators, what we did was, we came together, and this is what we came up with, what we thought as administrators students should know. How to communicate, how to set goals, basic knowledge of reading and math, cross-curricular, future goals, their ambitions, and daily living skills, like even how to write a check, you know, how to make a doctor's appointment, things, how to cook. These are all things that would be something that we would need to know if we're going to college. What should we do? We should know how to problem, we should be able to problem solve, communicate, and make decisions. And then, what qualities should we possess? Well, they should be self-confident, passionate, empathetic, and respectful. And again, these are just some of the things that we came up with as administrators. So, what I'd like to do now is have my students come here, one at a time, and they're going to read to you, commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, what they think that a portrait of a graduate looks like. So, we'll start with Anthony.
Good evening, good evening, everybody.
Good evening. What should a graduate know, Anthony?
They should know to respect, they should know how to take criticism, they should know how to act, they should know to be responsible.
And what should they be able to do?
They should be able to hold honors, they should be able to clean, they should be able to cook, they should be able to take care of themselves.
And what should, what characters should they possess?
They should have a respectful one, they should, they should be mature, they should be ready and independent.
Aw.
My name is, my name is Anthony, and I'm a portrait of a graduate.
Beautiful.
Good evening.
Good evening. Talk nice and loud.
They should know how to care for themselves, know how to cook for themselves, and know how to try their best.
And what should a graduate be able to do?
They should be able to make their own decisions, be able to know directions, be able to do stuff without their parents.
And what character should a graduate possess?
They should be respects, respectful, responsible, kind, and caring and helpful.
My name is Alyssa Bracken, and I am a portrait of a graduate student.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. What should a graduate know?
They should know algebra, reading, grammar, geometry, and easy education.
And what should a graduate be able to do?
They should be able to get along, be kind, take other people's opinion, agree or disagree, cook, buy their own stuff, work, and drive.
And what character should a graduate possess?
They should possess courage, respect, responsibility, intelligence, and creativity.
My name is, my name is Alana Butler, and I am a portrait of a graduate.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. What should a graduate know?
Math, reading, language, writing, and credit.
What should a graduate be able to do?
Get along, be kind, help others, clean, shop, cook and, cook and drive.
And what character should a graduate possess?
Imagit, imaginative, polite, smart, skillful, caring, energetic, thoughtful, active, brave, cooperative, dependable, and pleasant. My name is Miley, and I'm a portrait of a graduate.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. What should a graduate know, Lucas?
A graduate should know how to read, basic skills, geometry, Celsius, and how to cook dinner.
What should a graduate be able to do?
A graduate should be able to get along with others, be kind, be respectful, be considerate, be hard-working, be skillful, be polite, and to be caring.
And what character should a graduate possess?
A graduate should possess strength, efficiency, talent, respect, and care for others.
My name is Lucas Henry, and I'm a portrait of a graduate.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. What should a graduate know?
Have good grades and work hard, be nice.
And what should a graduate be able to do?
You should be able to do math, social studies, cook, clean, work, and exercise.
And what character should a graduate possess?
Happy, calm, and energetic. And it could, and it should be a regu, regular, smart kid.
My name is Lash, and I'm a portrait of a graduate.
So, moving along, well, we're going to go, right, moving along, we have our Bunker Hill responses, just a few more. So, what we did was a lot, I'm sorry, a lot of the other students had put in similar responses, and they said they should know how to read and perform math, how to think for themselves, have self-control. To do, they should work with others, get along with others, follow directions, and possess, be respectful, brave, creative, responsible, and kind. And moving to the last slide, Portrait of a Graduate, this is what we should expect our students to be when they go off to college. Be effective communicators, culturally competent, culturally competent, ethical, critical thinkers, creative thinkers, resilient, and personally responsible. And to me, as an administrator, I feel in a school, resilience is probably the most important one, and we know that resilience is the ability to recover quickly from change or misfortune. And it's very hard, we see in the schools, a lot that students do struggle with that. We do have a lot of situations where students can't recover right away, and through trauma, through whatever condition they've seen, or whatever their life at home encompasses. So, resilience is something that you're not born with, it's something that you develop over time, and in order to be resilient, you really need one special adult role model in your life to kind of help you through it, and a lot of our students don't have that. So, you know, our job is a little bit more difficult, the teachers certainly, you know, work very hard with this. We're working on building relationships through our social-emotional learning through this year, and we're hoping that we do see some resilience with some of our students that don't have it. But again, it's a work in progress. Like I always say, we get support from central office with our own PDs that we have. We are informed of what goes on, and then we turn key to our staff, and that's how they get the same message, and this is throughout all the schools. So, we're all on the same page. It's not something Bunker Hill is doing, and not another school, we're all doing the same thing. What we've tried this year is, we actually incorporated into our schedules, circle time, which all the schools are doing, and it's usually the first 15, 20 minutes of school where the teacher sits down with the students. There's a talking piece, whether it be a stuffed animal, or a book, or something, and whoever has a talking piece, talks. So, the teacher will, for example, you know, ask, okay, what, what do you think is the most important, what do you want to be when you grow up? Start from something very simple. And so, they pass the little talking piece around, and the students try to, you know, tell them what they want, want to be. Some students are very shy, and at first, they don't want to talk, and that's fine, they just pass it to the next person. So, no one is under pressure, but what it does is it builds stamina, and it builds relationships and trust. So, you'd see by the third or fourth day, everybody's talking, because no one feels embarrassed about what they're saying. We even had a situation in our behavioral disorder class the other day, where we do circles with everyone, and again, they're the greatest kids, and one of them actually said, you know, "I just want to say something, I want to apologize to so-and-so for getting him mad the other day," and I've never heard that, and the next thing you know, everybody was apologizing to everybody else, and it was just, it was like a chain reaction. And these were students who we'd say, oh, they'll never, but this is, it could, anyone, anyone could be, we expect the same from anyone. Behavior's the same, no student is different, we treat all of them the same, and it does, you could see from now into the second week of school, that students are really coming out of their shell and being more open and trusting. So, we're hoping that that continues, and again, like anything else as administrators, we monitor. So, myself, Ms. Wilson, we have been going into the classrooms every day and just popping in, and to the point where they even know we just come in, no one even stops, they just, and we walk around, and we see what they're doing, and we ask questions, and I think that has a lot to do, even with our scores from last year, that did improve, because we did a lot of that last year, and we went into the classrooms, and it made a difference, it really did. And the teachers were more than welcoming, oh, say good morning to Mrs. Pacoche, and you know, they continued what they had to do, and they did a great job. So, it's, it's a, you know, it's a conglomeration of everybody working together, it's no, and I always tell my people, I'm not up here, and you're not down there, and the custodian's down here, and I'm up here, or whatever. They say, we're all on the same playing field, we just have different jobs, that's all we do, and we stick to our job, and we do the best that we can. So, I'm hoping that, you know, this is a good year, it's starting out as a great year, except for the heat, and you know, we certainly can't control that, but we're still getting everything, you know, in that we need to, and hopefully, it will end up as a good year for us. I do want to just, just mention what we're planning on doing with our fifth graders in the spring, is making, doing, doing a field trip down to Yukon. You know, we're talking about a portrait of a graduate, just to show them, you know, what campus looks like, and you know, what goes on down there, and they do offer tours to students, so that's in the back of our mind, and we do have fifth grade teachers here who are willing to do that, and will take our students, so I'm excited about that. That's kind of like a culmination of what we do all year for them. I always, my staff knows too, when I have a PD or something, or even staff meetings, I like to just read a little inspirational something to everyone, so just indulge me for a few minutes, and this ties in again with a portrait of a graduate. How to learn. It wasn't until graduate school that Char learned how to learn. So much of her time in school had been spent memorizing meaningless facts, but in grad school, Char learned how to think critically, synthesize information, and draw her own conclusions. She examined how she learned best and could identify different teaching styles easily. With this knowledge, all she had to do to succeed was to adjust her style when necessary. Why does it take until graduate school before students learn how to learn, or better yet, how they learn? Children have the capacity, even as kindergartners, to recognize their own learning styles if they are shown how. And this is to teachers, administrators, anyone in education, give your students the ability to discover their own learning styles, and their opportunities will be boundless. That awareness alone is power-packed. If you haven't taken a look at your own thinking and learning styles, you will not be able to help your students gain that same understanding. Take a chance and look inside yourself, you'll be pleasantly surprised at whom you meet. We need to reevaluate our teaching style by reflecting on our own teaching style. And I think that's the key to getting students to graduate, to the graduate level that we want, and I always say this, and my staff knows, when we have our fifth grade promotion, we don't call it a graduation, our fifth grade promotion, I always tell them, you know, when I was growing up, my motherhood always said to me, Celia, she'd say, "Go to college and get a good education, so you never have to depend on a man to support you." And I always tell my students that, and for some reason, all the mothers are clapping when I say that, but it, and my boys, I tell them the same thing, go to school, get a good education, whatever it is, so you can have one good job, that you don't need two or three little jobs to support your family, you know, an honest living, no matter what you do. Higher education might not be for everybody, but there's a skill, there is something that you can do. So, we try to embed that in our students from now, and I'm hopeful that they get that message, and you know, again, I thank everyone for, you know, listening to our little presentation here. My people, my boys and girls have a little presentation to the board right now, so I'd like to do that. Well, you made us feel very special, thank you very much. Okay, any questions for us? That is the end of our presentation.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Pacoche? Commissioner Vance Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Great presentation, thank you, Principal.
Thank you.
I will go to curriculum, as you would probably expect. ELA, I'm noticing the numbers, but we do have in queue, new curriculum to bring. ELA, I'm noticing the numbers, but we do have in queue new curriculum to bring. I asked for a, an update on that rollout next week, matter of fact. So, hopefully, I'll hear good news to when you will see that.
I'm told it's gonna be sooner than later, Commissioner, I'm hoping.
I'm hoping also, we thought it would be to start the year, it didn't quite work out, like science did. I hope that's working out well as well.
We have the materials.
And I asked for an update on that as well. So, hopefully, those two will work out. And math. We actually had a little different rollout than I think we're gonna go in the future, maybe three or four years ago, on some new math curriculum. And I stated that, at that time, I was gonna watch the third graders, who are now fifth graders. And the chart pretty much supports what I had hoped wouldn't happen, but I thought would. And that would be, maybe, some of our students left behind. And obviously, we can't let that happen, right?
Right, that's correct.
But the chart obviously shows, on the math, right, that the fifth graders are not doing as well as the students coming after them. So, I'm not sure, maybe it's not even a question for you and me, I know our math coordinator is in the house, I saw her behind me, how we're gonna really try to maintain that these fifth graders going forward? Because as far as the numbers go, it looks like those students after them are doing well. How are we gonna make sure that these fifth graders going forward don't continue to be left behind? Do we know what we, our plans are for that?
Well, I know, what we do is, when we have our math IDT meetings, we do focus on students, you know, individual students, because of the iReady program that they do, the individual iReady, that every student does forty-five minutes a week, if not more. It's individualized, and so, we are able to pull up on the screen and actually point to, you know, what the students, who needs what, and how we can group them. So, we are targeting the students that do need help. So, it's not that we don't know, you know, and this year, I believe there's another, another report that we're gonna be using, that's even, when we do their benchmark testing in the beginning of the year, if I'm not mistaken, it's gonna be geared to their individual ability. It's gonna be not just one test, based on what they know already. So, the growth will be according to what the students know. Because not everybody can grow at the same pace, because everybody starts at a different level. So, I think, you know, we are managing to, you know, hone in on the students that do need extra help.
Okay, and maybe, left behind is too strong of a term.
Well, that wasn't a term they used to use, it's, you know, students left behind.
And we come from way back, right?
We do.
We use those old terms. But just the chart does show us that we're doing some things right. We're obviously doing some things right, going forward.
And I was leery about putting this in, I said, but, you know, I'm not ashamed, I mean, we're going in the right direction, I know we need work, I, you know, and it's not for lack of teaching, certainly, because like I said, you know...
And please, I'm not trying to say that.
No, no, I understand that.
But I know the curriculum did change for a certain population of students. And it was always my concern that going forward, I really didn't want so many changes that some students that didn't see the change early on would not benefit later. But unfortunately, the chart is telling me that. So, hopefully, as the lower-grade principals, please continue to push that that population that did not see those changes a few years ago, get whatever help they need. And it sounds like you're doing that.
Definitely our focus this year, and that'll be part of our school improvement plan as well.
And I noticed one of your other charts of the portrait of graduate is resilience.
Resilience, we have to bounce back, yes.
Okay, so, those, those students need that resilience.
That's exactly right.
Right? To, to do what they can to get better.
And they have to be taught that. So, that's, again, that's our administration and the adults.
This does tie back to every other lesson you teach. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We're very excited about the portrait of a graduate, and I know that we've, Dr. Ruffin has rolled it out in the whole district, so we're very excited about that.
Oh, go ahead.
I would like to share. I just want to share with you, is your microphone on?
Is your mic on? Okay, get a little closer, yeah.
Is this better?
Yep.
Yes.
Principal Picochi, I'd like to thank you and your outstanding students for presenting tonight. You're the first of our schools that I've had an opportunity to hear this presentation from, and I want to commend you on your students and bringing them to present, because I think it's so important that students learn how to speak publicly, and they've done an outstanding job. And I'm very proud, as superintendent, to say, the portrait of a graduate is in good hands, as we define what we want our students to do and be able to learn as they progress, because they are our future. And I think we have a bright future in Waterbury and at Bunker Hill, because of your leadership. So, I want to thank you for that. I also know, being the very first one to present, in, you know, in front of a new superintendent, in front of the Board of Commissioners, can also be a little intimidating when you do that. But you have done a great job, and your students, an outstanding job of being able to show us what students can do when we start very early, and having them articulate what it is we want them to know and be able to do. And I think we're in great hands, we know that. Our principals and our teachers are gonna make great things happen. And I want to thank you, and I want to thank the parents who are here this evening, to make this wonderful presentation, I really appreciate you, and standing behind these students, because very soon, you're gonna see these portraits of graduate being the graduates of Waterbury Public Schools, so thank you again.
Thank you, Doctor.
And thank you for the card. It was a beautiful card, and I appreciate it. I took a sneak preview, and I read it first.
You did, they did.
Thank you.
Great job. Let's give them a round of applause. Next is, is there any members of the public who signed up to speak? Anybody sign up? Melissa Grossman?
Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry. As you can see, my little one is tired, it's almost bedtime. Good evening, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. My name is Melissa Grossman, and I'm a parent of four children. One is home with my husband. This is Jacob, who's ten, Emma, or Hannah, who's five, and Emma, who is eight. I come here tonight to make you aware of some issues I've been having as of lately. These issues actually have not stopped since last year, and I was here speaking multiple times about the same subject. Lack of communication in getting my daughter the free, appropriate, public education she is entitled to. Neither one is more important than the other, as listed. Both are equally important. Lack of communication between a school and a parent is a huge problem. When a parent wants to be a part of a child's education and has no response, it's disappointing and disheartening. I've spent at least twenty-four hours the past week writing letters, emails, and having phone calls. I'm a mom of four. Jacob goes to Wham's, and my other three daughters go to Gil Martin. I have had at least fifteen emails since June that have not been responded to. One was today, two were yesterday. Who does a parent go to when administration doesn't answer? I've been trying to get answers since June. Numerous emails have gone unanswered. The school wants my daughter, Emma Rockefeller, here, next to me, to have her special education services ended. They want to switch her to a 504 plan and tell me that there are more rights federally than under the ID Act. You mean to tell me, a girl who has a chromosomal disorder with ADHD and tested with a lower IQ, and is at least two grade levels behind, even after staying back, she does not qualify for special education? She has at least three, if not four, qualifying diagnoses, and I'm told, no, she doesn't. How do I help her when this, all the school does is close their eyes and turn their heads? I did not receive her IEP and test results until yesterday, fifty-four days past the five-day limit of a parent receiving the paperwork. Why was I not given this in a timely manner? I understand it was at the end of the year, as it was June nineteenth, but why did the principal show up at my front door yesterday afternoon with no notice, with the secretary in her front seat as a witness to hand-deliver the IEP and records? Last I checked, the only time an administrator can show up unannounced is for a welfare check or for truancy. There was no email, no phone call. Fifty-four days. I'm a mother who wants what's best for her child. I'm trying my best to meaningfully participate in her education. How is the school administration, how can they turn their back on what is in the best interest of a child? Speaking of best interest, I'm gonna hurry up, because I have a lot of pages. Speaking of best interest, last Monday was the first day of school. My daughter was promised Mrs. Vow by Darren Schwartz and Jen Dwyer last year. She has a 504 for alopecia, and when she has hair loss, she's embarrassed. I wanted her to have a sensitive teacher who would meet her needs. This was agreed upon and put in place. The first day of school was a fiasco. Apparently, there was a dojo that went out Sunday to inform parents that Mrs. Vow went to first grade. I didn't have it on my phone, and I didn't find out until Monday night. This explains why my daughter was upset, I suppose, but the bigger issue is she was crying uncontrollably, screaming in the hall, and refused to get up for four hours. I received a text from someone there that told me, as a favor, a mom should know her child was in the hall and not in class. I called the school and asked for an administrator, and got the parent liaison, who was not an administrator, and was asked, "Do you have any suggestions on how to get her to stop crying and get her to class?" Are you kidding me? There's a psychologist, there's a social worker, administration, and a crisis team. Why wasn't I officially notified from administration? I found out later that night that Hannah hit my daughters and staff trying to help. Why was I not contacted? Why was she not written up for even data purposes? She was left in the hall to look like a caged animal, lonely and scared, in front of new kids and their parents while walking by. I know Mrs. Vow is caring and sensitive because she had Emma. Emma has a feeding tube and other issues, and Mrs. Vow is nothing but professional and sensitive. Now Hannah's in a class with a teacher who unfortunately is ill. I called the school yesterday and was told she will be out at least a month. Well, what education is she really going to get with a substitute? I don't want her on ABC, watching YouTube and coloring. She can count to a hundred, she can read, and knows all her letters and sounds. One month, at least, now I have to worry if she will be behind. It's just not acceptable. Today, also, something happened to Emma, where I found out after school from her that someone pushed her. It turns out, it was a domino effect, but regardless, I had a conversation last year when my daughter Chloe had an incident, and I had bad communication with the principal, and lacks of response, and made it very clear to her, if anything happened to my children, regardless of the case, I wanted to be notified by administration. I called and spoke to Mrs. Dwyer tonight, and when she got on the phone, she was already on guard and defensive to me. I asked her what happened and asked why I wasn't notified. I said, "The nurse checked her, and she was fine." I reminded her of my request last year, and her response to me was, "Ms. Grossman, the incident was medical, I don't report medical cases." I said, "Regardless, you should've called." Her response was, "I'm sorry you feel this way, but this is the way I run my school," and hung up. I cannot, nor do I have the trust in administration at this school to put my children's needs first. Isn't being in education all about the child? Because in my case, it's not. I can go on, how my son Jacob was denied a 504 two years ago for ADHD because he had no behaviors and good grades, but they never saw, saw him off his meds and never evaluated him. I could say more. How things were written in Emma's last IEP, that should not have been, but I'll be here for hours. Help me get my kids the free, appropriate, public education they are entitled to, or at least help me get them out of the school, or help me get them out of the district. Please, just help me.
Thank you. Cirilla Stoll? She's not here? Okay. All right. If she comes, we'll allow her to speak later, I guess. All right. All right. Moving on to number two, request approval to apply for the CSDE Primary Mental Health Program. Darren Schwartz. And Ellen Louise Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, Louise, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Good.
This evening, we're here to request your approval of the submission of a grant for the Primary Mental Health Program. It's a grant through the State Department of Education, one that's longstanding in the district. It essentially provides funding to allow the district to give early intervention mental health services to young children to detect and prevent emotional, behavioral, and learning problems. In the past, the program has been operated at Duggan and Cross Schools. This year, we're expanding the program to also include Sprague School. Students there will receive services in the, one session each, a session being told to fourteen weeks, and they'll comply with the state requirements. A child associate will provide the program, it's essentially a play-centered program, where the student directs conversation and play with the child associate in order to build social skills. Are there any questions about this? There is a match to this, you may be familiar, we've had this for many years. We have constrained the match this year to be the same as it's been in prior years, at $6,944. The grant is $20,000. Any questions?
I'm just glad that it's being expanded, because it has been limited to those two schools for many years, and it's a great program. So, thank you for expanding it at a low cost.
Right, Darren's guidance, we did that. We're also trying to locate other funding that might support this at additional elementary schools.
No, it's a great program. Okay, no questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Linda Francisi. Request approval and agreement of lease with 562 Connecticut LLC for property located at 562 Captain Neville Drive.
Good evening, everyone. Last time we were here, we gave a lengthy presentation on our business plan to move to 562 Captain Neville Drive. In the meantime, we've given you a lease that you have in front of you, and we're here this evening to answer any questions or concerns that you may have regarding the lease.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like the Finance Committee Chair to give an explanation of the LLC and where their title is located, please.
Well, the LLC is a Delaware company. It's registered in Delaware, and per Connecticut statute thirty-four dash two thirty-five, they're, because their sole purpose is for leasing, they're not required to have a Connecticut license. This is also the company that we, the city already leases property from, I believe it's 560 Captain Neville Drive, where...
Central vehicle maintenance.
Where central vehicle maintenance is.
Yes, sure.
So, are the principals involved still the same? Because this LLC did exist in Connecticut for about twenty days.
Well, there was a, there is a principle that's with tax clearance, is also in your packet, that has...
I can go back and look at that, okay. I just want to clarify, because it came in a question, and then when I did look on a Secretary of State site, back in two thousand and three, in Connecticut, they existed but for, like I said, about three weeks.
Well, there is a statute that allows them to not hold licenses.
Well, I don't blame anyone for going to Delaware v. Connecticut, but that's an entirely different conversation. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner, what?
So, I just wanted to take a minute to say that I have harassed Linda and Adam for the last few days since the contract came out. This process started back in the spring, when...
Well, even before that, but...
Right, but for the board, the process started in the spring when we went out to RFP for space.
Correct.
Clearly, there was only one respondent.
Correct.
So, we went up, you guys went up and looked at it, then I went, I'm not sure if this is working. I went up with Mr. Orso, we took a walk-through with you folks, then I encouraged the rest of you to join us. Those of you that could, did. We took a walk-through of the facility. I then asked the Fire Marshal and the Health Department to review the facility. That was done. And then, I think that we have, other than tonight, when we're gonna move this forward, dotted our i's and crossed our t's on this. I know that I have questioned you about the impact potentially of the change in the SNAP allocation from Congress, and how that may or may not affect us in the future. You've assured me that we're locked in for at least the next four years. and that we have sufficient capital to maintain it after that. I know in the contract, I have asked you about the environmentals. And we've been assured that there are no environmental issues there that will affect either our workforce there or the fact that we're actually using the site to cook for the children. None of that is gonna affect that. Okay, so I'm just going through these. The other thing is, it is a triple net lease, which you get what you get in a triple net lease. There's a minimum annual payment, and then there are other costs involved. You've done a good job of articulating all that in the lease. So I'm comfortable moving this forward. I didn't want to sit here tonight and not be able to answer any question, including the one that Commissioner Vanstone texted to me at about 11 o'clock last night. All right, I don't know if you have any other questions for either myself or for the team that put it together, but I think that this has been well-developed and is appropriate to move forward.
Any other questions? Okay, I think, and I really thank the commissioners for their thoroughness and these good questions that they always ask. So, good luck in the move.
Great, thank you.
Are your bags all packed? Pots and pans, right.
I would encourage us to do a little test. In the next couple of months, some of us should meet for lunch at some of the schools that we're currently serving with what we're currently providing. And let's go back after we open this new facility and see the difference. I'm game if you are.
You buying?
I'm buying.
Commissioner?
I think we should ask the students, frankly.
You don't want the answer. I'm asking you to go eat yourself.
I don't want, I'm gonna ask my students that I know that are in school because they will give an honest answer. Okay, they will.
They will.
Okay, that's gonna be the portrait of a graduate, honesty, right? All right, next is Karen Rainville and Darren Schwartz. This is, these are the approval of professional services agreement pertaining to the school readiness grant quality enhancement dollars. So it's, these are grant dollars.
Correct, so the school readiness grant, quality enhancement grant is an annual dollar amount that we receive for the state for quality purposes for our school readiness programs. And so we're here to ask your consideration for three professional services agreements under that contract. The first is with Patricia Reinhardt, and that's to provide coaching and training to one of our school readiness sub-granties. Liz, do you want me to do all three at the same time?
I don't know, does anybody have a question on that? I think that contract was like $22,000, I forget.
The first contract for Patricia Reinhardt was $2,200, it's a smaller of them, excuse me, $2,400. Susan Vivian is a contract for $22,400. And then Easter Seals, who is the vendor who will be providing BCBA Tier III supports to our students in our community-based school readiness programs.
Maybe you can talk about the Easter Seals because that's kind of new initiative to address and help our early childhood teachers, help with students with behavioral needs. This is kind of a new use of our school readiness funds, and I'm very excited about it. So maybe you could just share with the commissioners.
Absolutely. So this is very new. Waterbury is the first city to use their quality enhancement dollars in this way. And it's really geared towards building a system of tiered supports within our community-based school readiness program, something that's never happened. The past few years, we've focused specifically on working with our early intervention team through the district and have really done, I think, phenomenal work bridging the gap and working to systematize how supports are provided to those programs. And while we know that's being very successful, we also know we have children who are in need of Tier III supports while we're working on the universal targets within those programs. And so this is a new initiative. We're very excited about it. The programs are very excited about it. And we're hoping that we'll have really positive outcomes to report.
Yes. And I think my understanding is that it's gonna be evaluated to see the impact. So we look forward to hearing those results.
Yes.
So I'm excited about this. Any questions about the school readiness quality enhancement grants? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the request approval of an agreement with Waterbury Youth Services for the truancy prevention. Wendy and Elaine. And I think Kathy Crowe is here also from Waterbury Youth Services. Got the whole team here.
Good evening, Wendy Owen. I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce Kathy Crowe. She's the Executive Director of Waterbury Youth Services Incorporated. And Elaine Skoronsky, who is the IDA Grant Manager. So this evening, the Education Department requests your approval of a contract with Waterbury Youth Services Incorporated. Waterbury Youth Services serves as the local youth service bureau for the city of Waterbury. The Youth Service Bureau Grant Program requires that the city match the amount of state funding. The city has budgeted $75,500 in cash and will match the remainder, if any, with in-kind contributions. Last year, Waterbury Youth had requested $80,051, and they were awarded $76,396. $896 of in-kind services were provided. The funding supports the truancy prevention program. And in addition to truancy referrals, Waterbury Youth Services also provides recreational activities, individual counseling, group counseling, family therapy, parent training, and outreach programs. Waterbury Youth Service is a nonprofit entity, and they are exempt from the RFP process under the city's procurement ordinance. At this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to Kathy Crowe, who will review truancy data. And then we'll take any questions.
Hi, I believe you have been presented with the data in front of you. You all have copies of the truancy data. We provided you with data from the year 1314 right through the most recent year. You do have it, right?
Yes, we do, yep.
So I'm prepared really to answer any questions you have. I hope that the data kind of speaks for itself. You can see how the number of elementary school referrals has grown over the years, unfortunately. From 33 children in 1314 to most recent number last year of 62 elementary school young people. So I don't know...
I guess I would welcome some more of the trend analysis that you are seeing. And is there any kind of a trend of why in the uptick in that?
I think probably more, more, schools are aware of the program, aware of the agency, aware of the opportunity. I think we have seen better results in terms of getting young people back to school. And, you know, so I think that that's generated more referrals. I think it probably speaks to the times in terms of what's happening with young people. And I think we've seen a kind of downward trend in terms of a lot of juvenile issues getting younger and younger. It's an unfortunate situation. I'm gonna turn to the Director of the Juvenile Justice Programs, Deanna, to see if she has anything she'd like to add. Deanna, can you pull a chair up?
I just want to add, with the chronic absenteeism legislation that went into effect back in 2015, that also could have impacted the increase in the referrals at elementary level.
I think we do a good job of outreach. So I don't know that it means there's an increase in truancy. It's an increase in truancy referrals. So, you know, it's very hard to really know what that is, you know, what really is happening there.
Good evening. My name's Deanna Krakowski. I'm the Juvenile Justice Team Leader, and the truancy prevention and counseling program is one of the programs I oversee. One of the things specifically for elementary school students that we see is that the influx of immigration has caused some of the lack of knowledge about what the requirements for education are, what the attendance requirements are. And so in a lot of those cases, we're getting more referrals, and it's really just a matter of educating the parents about what the requirements are and how they should be attending school, and sometimes overcoming some barriers. We do have a very transient population. So we are seeing a lot of transportation errors or just lack of knowledge errors, some basic needs issues that we help to refer them to resources to be able to get them to go back to school.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, as far as truancy, and we'll get to the others. The term "truancy" has been around forever, so recent knowledge, to me, doesn't hold a lot of water. I'm more interested in root cause corrective analysis to what we can do about this and less effort on creating additional excuses for why it's happening. And that's what this data tells me. We're just creating excuses, and we're not really attacking the problem. Am I reading it wrong?
I think it's multi-dimensional. I mean, I think the way that the data is presented to you, you know, I could see that that might be the interpretation. What the purpose of this program is, is to really engage the families and find out what the barriers to attending school are, and then being able to help the family and empower the family to address those barriers and get them to whatever resources are necessary on their own. It's a very short-term program, but it really is, it looks at kind of the holistic view of what are the issues, what are the barriers, and how can we work with the family to empower them, to overcome them.
You're using different words to describe what I said was root cause corrective analysis.
Right.
The corrective analysis is not what I'm seeing.
Okay.
And I think, Madam President, we need to go down that road. Just establishing the reasons slash excuses, to me, doesn't correct the problem. Is it raw data that we need to get to that point? Absolutely. So I'm not saying this data's, you know, not worth, it's worth a lot. But we need to take that next step. How do we correct it?
Sure.
And that's what I'm looking for to, will we solve truancy? Probably never. Will we make it better? If it's as simple as the right information being out there, we should be able to correct that.
Right.
As a district. I'm not saying you or anyone at that table, as a district, we should be able to correct information. And if it's, and I know it's not that simple. It's not as simple as information. But if that's the next step, we need to go there.
We're certainly willing to collect whatever data, you know, we can collect, whatever is possible to collect, that would provide you the information that, you know, that you need, that would help you, you know, make the decisions you need to make. This is so far what we've been asked to collect and what we've been collecting since the onset of the program. It's not really explaining what caused the truancy. It's kind of what we found from the time we entered the case, what the status of the case was when we closed the case.
But the first year we did it was 1314. We're now into the 1819 school year.
Correct.
At some point, we need to take the next step. We can collect data until 2030, and I don't think I'll be on the board then. But we need to start taking the next step. Collecting data is not gonna solve, well, it will solve a problem if we take that data and do something with it. But when I see numbers from 2013 but still no corrective action, I start to wonder, what are we doing collecting data if we're not gonna do anything with it? And I'm not saying you're not doing anything with it. What I'm saying is I'm not seeing that corrective action. And I think that's a fair criticism. It may be there, but we're not being presented. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney, and then Commissioner Awad, and then Commissioner Vanstone.
So when I look at this data, what I see and what draws my eye is the line where it says "closed and returned to school." Because back in 2013, 2014, that percentage, although the numbers were lower in the terms of the students referred, that number was 14%. And today, when I go to the back of the page, the more recent numbers, I'm looking at 28%. So while the number of referrals have gone up, we clearly have done something here to get those kids back to school. So something is going right here.
And if I can be heard, Waterbury Youth Service is the entity we use to refer our most truant students to once we have tried everything. And from there, they go to Waterbury Youth. And you can see that they don't have, they have limited success in getting those families in because they work with the families. So you see a lot of in the data that the parents have refused the service. Truancy, Waterbury has done a great job with truancy. We have been in the attendance consortium of the state of Connecticut for many years. Unfortunately, I think with budget cuts, last year, it was ended. But through the years, I was involved through Anne Marie Cohenin, and we would go to the yearly seminars. We would bring back information, try different programs. The numbers in Waterbury were the best in our dirk. We have done better than any big city. However, you can see that you run into this problem with this group of kids that's hard to solve. And in fact, the consortium used to try different grant programs, and we came before you on some of them to try to implement them. And so many of them were not successful. They kept data, UConn checked, and they weren't successful. So it's a really hard area to crack. This year, we're probably gonna have to put in a truancy intervention program because the state has new laws on it. And many of them hit the young kids because that's where you can change the behavior. So you'll be seeing us looking to implement something to improve truancy in our district from those interventions that the state has put out. They just came out with a nice big manual. And the reason I think why Waterbury Youth has gotten better is because they're focusing on the cause. It's so hard to figure out the cause, and we've really pushed on cause to try to figure that out. And I think that has had some improvement. So I know it's tough. Waterbury Youth serves a limited purpose for us. They just take those kids that we refer. And in fact, the next thing that we have on our agenda, the JRB, is supposed to be used for the FOISMS in place of the FOISMS, the Family with Service Needs petitions. So the JRB is gonna come involved, hopefully, with some of our kids. But last year, we had no interventions whatsoever. The court wasn't taking FOISMS, and the JRB was not up and running.
Because of the funding cut, right?
Yeah.
When did they cut the funding?
Well, the JRB was not up and running for truancy, yeah, let me speak for truancy. It's been up and running for other reasons for a few years.
Gotcha.
And we'll talk about that. But this will be the first year we can really refer as if it was a Family with Service Needs petition. So hopefully, we'll see some improvement with that. But it is a tough area.
Yeah.
But we are doing pretty well, you know, even though we're a big city.
Commissioner Sweeney, a follow-up question?
Yeah, not a follow-up question, but a comment. In terms of the uptick in referrals, I would expect that some of that uptick was because we are no, we as a district are no longer allowed to refer kids to court for truancy. And we had to find other options for them, and this was one of the options.
The stick is gone.
I think that's true.
Who was it, Commissioner Awad?
Yep. So can you just give me an idea, because there's a very large number of multiple referrals for other services? Could you give us an idea of what those referrals are and what other agencies you're referring these families to?
Sure. So sometimes that's agencies that we refer youth to for other services. It might be counseling services. It might be, you know, other kinds of services that we think the family needs. Those services may need language-specific services that we can't provide. So we might refer to Madre Latino or whatever. But generally, counseling services of some sort. of some sort. Or sometimes, when we get the referral, the school has made multiple referrals. So we're one place they refer, but they also have identified several other services that they've made, several other referrals they've made at the same time.
So those referrals on this list are not necessarily indicative of referrals that Waterbury Services made, but the child may come to you with already as well as those you've made?
It's a combination, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I just want to point out is that this is a limited program. It's a short-term program. You see 350 referrals in a year. We have two case managers. So it's a very limited, short-term program. I think we could do much better with more, more time with the youth, more time with the families, a much more intensive program. We go to the city every year to ask for CDBG money, you know, that money has been cut every year. We approach other funding sources. I mean, two case managers for 350 families. So please, it is a limited program, and we do the best we can do with our resources.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, and you may have stumbled towards the answer of my question. On the scope of services of the contract, it says, "Waterbury Youth Services agrees to provide truancy prevention work with," quote-unquote, "an adequate number of staff and supervisors who are," quote-unquote, "adequately trained and certified." So are you saying that right now, this adequate number of staff and supervisors is the two-case workers alone?
It's two case managers and a supervisor. It's adequate for the scope of service that we have, but it's a very, what I'm saying, it's a limited scope of service. It's, the scope of service is designed to fit the, you know, the resources that we have. But it's a short-term program. It's, you know, it's a couple of contacts with the family, home visits. We have the family come in, but it's not an intensive, you know, therapeutic, you know, treatment program.
So it sounds like we backed into it. We realized how much money or resources we had and then determined how small a scope can we draw around this to make this adequate? So while I understand that explanation, it really doesn't sound adequate. I understand your point. For what we're doing, we can call it adequate, but for servicing the kids at the Waterbury Public School District?
Oh, right.
It's not adequate.
So if I may, I do understand, but we also use a large pool of interns in this program. So we usually have, on average, three to five interns per semester, sometimes year-long interns, to help provide the services and get the families into the program more quickly and without having to cause any kind of waitlist issues.
And that kind of gets to the second point. My second part was, what equates to adequately trained and certified?
So those interns are used for some of the backdoor stuff, scheduling the initial appointments, you know, scheduling some of the initial intakes, those kinds of things, so that the case managers are freed up to do more intensive work with the youth and the families.
Okay, so they can help with the paperwork. They can help with the kind of behind-the-scenes things to free up some time for the people who are actually trained to be dealing with some of these kids.
Yes, entering the data into the computer system, that kind of thing.
And at the end of the day, after the processes have happened, you know, we still have a data point for cases closed but are still truant. So while that number is, you know, some years it was somewhat significant, I would call 5% significant, others it was much less. What happens to that kid? We've closed the case, which I'm not really sure what that means if they're still truant, but what happens now to that kid?
That was the kid that we would then get back and send in to court in a Family with Service Needs. That would, or the other option that we have for children 11 and under would be a referral to the Department of Children and Families.
All right. So if I can understand the continuum, Waterbury Public Schools tries to deal with the truancy. If we cannot, we ask someone like Waterbury Youth Services to come in and pick up the ball where we can. And if they can't, on these small number of kids, we're there, go through the process, close the case, but the kid is not in the return-to-school category, or hasn't withdrawn, or hasn't done something else, then they head on to that process.
Correct.
Okay.
And in lieu of that, because they took away the Family with Service Needs, we're going to start referring to the Juvenile Review Board this year.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. I think your point is well-taken. The services, the funding is not there for what we really need. I think you're right.
Well, that's why the adequate number.
Right. No, you're absolutely right. Commissioner Adorno?
Thank you. Good evening. You did answer a part of my question before. I noticed that there was a lot of high numbers of Hispanics, so my question obviously was, I hope that the people, the resources that were available in their language, whether it's for the family or for the students. So I was just curious if the numbers that were high throughout the years, was it because of lack of personnel that are bilingual that speak their language? I know you said you refer them to like madre latina. I know joelle and stuff, but is like, is there also a follow-through to make sure that they are getting services outside of what you can provide?
Yep. So during the short-term time that we're with them, we're usually with the family anywhere from two to six weeks. And so we do, during that time, we are both making those referrals and having them, and following up with them to have them linked and actually follow through with those referrals. We have, for the past at least three years since I've been there, always had at least one bilingual staff, Spanish-speaking staff, and usually at least one or two interns that are also bilingual. So there's plenty of resources for translation, and we do also have all of our forms in English and Spanish.
All right. Okay, good. And I think what, like Mr. Van Stone, Tom Van Stone, was talking about the data, I think the data is important to really determine the cause of the truancy. But I think also, as a parent, we got to really hold the parents more accountable, especially if they're refusing the services that are provided to them. I don't understand why they wouldn't accept that. Do they give you a reason as to why they refuse it?
So there are times where they will give us reasons. Some of the reasons are because services are already in place. So if at the time they were referred to us, the school also maybe made a referral to a home-based therapy program. That may have, you know, they may have started that immediately, and now they don't feel, they feel like they're already on a path where they don't need us to link them to additional resources because they're already getting services in another place. So that sometimes is a reason that they would refuse. There are families who just aren't willing to come in and engage with us and talk about what's going on with them to be able to link them to services. That is an unfortunate reality. We do several attempts at family engagement. This program includes home visits. So even those individuals that we have not been able to talk to on the phone or have responded to mail, we do unscheduled home visits and scheduled home visits if we have had contact with them to continue to try to engage them.
Is transportation an issue, maybe?
For the students.
Either for parents to either...
So we are centrally located on the bus line, but certainly if we do have the option of all intakes taking place either in our office or in their home. So we are mobile. We will meet them wherever, you know, they are most comfortable and wherever they can get to.
Okay, thank you.
And I should point out that some of the refusal for services is more of a passive refusal. They agree to the service. They schedule the appointment and they don't show. So we get a fair amount of that.
Yeah, and that's the part that I, you know, I feel bad that we're as the follow-through, really hold the parents accountable, that we're trying to do everything we can as a district to help your child be successful, and now it's really left up to the parent. So thank you. I just hope that they do find a better solution and how we can really improve our truancy numbers. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I think we have those answers, and I think you're up for the next one. Request approval and acceptance of the Office of Policy and Management Grant Award for the JRB Grant Program.
Elaine Skronski, Department of Special Education. This particular, these two contracts came about as a result of a problem with funding for the juvenile review boards, which are called JRBS. The state has used the juvenile review boards in the different cities to reduce the number of low-level criminal offenses being sent to court. So different cities, including ours, have set up juvenile review boards. They were funded by the Department of Children and Families. Last year, with our budget issues, problems developed, and for some reason, the JRB was not funded by DCF. So there was a funding gap for the program, which has been operating in Waterbury, I think, at least three or four years. In any event, the state came up with a solution, which was temporary federal funding from OPM. So the OPM funding had to be applied for by the city. It required a city versus an agency. And you know, you know that most towns, the service bureaus are within the towns, they're an agency of the town, but ours is separate. So Waterbury had to apply on its behalf. So Waterbury applied for the grant, which is $150,000, and actually, $150,442. The grant program is for only one year to cover the gap in funding. The funding is to go to Waterbury. We are going to be in charge of the funding, and then Waterbury Youth Service will be requesting reimbursement from us. There will be some reporting requirements that the city has. The JRB, first contract that we have on the agenda is simply the Notice of Grant Award, where the mayor has to sign. The turnover for the OPM signing was just in a few days, so we have a Board of Alderman meeting on Monday. And it depended to the Notice of Grant Award or all the conditions for the grant. So that's one contract that's in front of you for approval. The second one is called a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Waterbury and Waterbury Youth Services. This agreement sets forth how we will work the grant and our relationship between ourselves in administering the grant. And basically, what it has in it is all of what Waterbury's held to, Waterbury Youth is going to be held to. It's basically how it's going to be. We do have some data for the juvenile review board that I believe you have in front of you. The juvenile review board is meant to be a deterrent for youth to, instead of putting them in jail or bringing them into the court system, it's meant to keep them out. 60% of the JRB referrals, at least, are from the police. Our police, instead of sending a case to court, if it's low-level, first-time offense, no injuries or violence, guns, they will send that case to the JRB. In addition, the probation department sends cases to the JRB. And the Waterbury schools have also sent cases to the JRB. We sent about 40% of the cases. I think there's a chart in here on who's, what schools are using it. So far, we have not used it for truancy, as we mentioned earlier, because it was in, the referral forms were with the State of Connecticut last year, and so this year, we're going to start referrals, if they have the capacity. And that's a problem. I mean, if they have the capacity. It's another program that operates on a shoestring budget, trying to help these students. So the data is there for what they do. Their, our juvenile review boards, I think, what, you have five now?
Correct.
Those are volunteers from the community who give up their time once every two weeks to hear the cases that come before them from either the police or from us. The JRB allows the student to, well, makes requirements. You have to go to school. You have to do restitution, maybe, or other kinds of things to make up for what they've done. They might get counseling. The JRB tends to help the whole family because usually when the student ends up before them, other problems are revealed, and the people on the board are from DCF, from court, our schools, and they come up with ways to help the students. And if the student is successful, the court case never goes into court and they don't have a record. And for us, it would be disciplinary infractions. Same thing would hold true, that there wouldn't be a record. Any questions?
Commissioner Awad?
I have a finance question. So we're getting $150,442, and we're handing the whole thing over to them.
No.
Yes, it is. In this, in the contract with Waterbury Youth Services, you're 100% pass-through.
Well, how they pay you, though, is not, they're not going to give all the money upfront.
No, that's not what I'm saying. The value of the contract to the city is $150,442. The value of the contract with Waterbury Services is the same amount of money.
Yes.
But the City of Waterbury is doing all the paperwork to the state, right?
Yes.
Well, we're going to have to put in data that comes from it.
So my question is, we didn't hold back any money to cover our cost of services to administer the grant?
We asked if we could do it, and we were not permitted to do so by OPM.
So we have to do all the paperwork for no money? They don't help, they don't give us any slack on covering our costs of administering the grant?
We didn't inquire about that because I feel the same way.
It's nice to know you asked. It's unfortunate that they don't recognize that we still have incurred costs to do this.
I know.
Thank you.
I had a question in terms of, do you have any, with the referrals for the different schools, what ages are we talking about? Are the ages there? I'm not seeing it.
So no, there are not specific ages. However, our, the youngest client that we have served is seven, and we only, and the oldest referral age is 17. So as long as they are under 18, we are able to service them at point of referral through the six months. So it's an intensive case management program of six months. So as long as their birthday is not, they're not 18 when they're referred, we will still hold them till the six months if they turn 18.
Yeah, I'm very concerned about the young kids being referred. That blows my mind.
Agreed.
So I think we really, I mean, the data is good for us to look at, to see why, you know, why these young kids are being referred to a juvenile review board.
It is in lieu of arrest, and so usually the...
They're arresting seven-year-olds?
So that's why they're coming to the JRB. So if there is a serious infraction, usually for the elementary school kids, it's weapons. So there's, if there's a weapon that's being brought to school in lieu of arrest and having them go to court, then they're referred to the Juvenile Review Board to help resolve that issue. So most of the elementary school is, are usually weapons or some kind of fighting, like serious fighting injuries, or with some possible injuries.
I mean, but I think it's good data for the school district to look at. You see Dreg School is standing out. You've got Reagan School, and of course, other schools. So I think as a district, it behooves us to look at these...
Yeah, I'd be happy to aggregate it. If there's other questions that you have or more specific information that you'd like, I'm happy to aggregate it and get that to you.
So I think it's something we need to look at. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, not necessarily a question, but a comment. I've never, since we initiated this, been a big fan of this review board. I think we spent a lot of time and money on this piece, and many of the students that come through this could be classified as those who are applying bully tactics back in school. And I don't believe we spend enough time or money on those that are affected by the bullying. I think it's out of control. I think we're, again, I'll use my term "excuses," applying excuses to allow children to stay in the classroom, that quite honestly, that 50% of your numbers are police referrals. And I heard you where it said it wasn't violent, it wasn't gun, it wasn't weapon, et cetera, et cetera. Well, if the police were the referral, something happened. Something happened. So those 50%, where and what are we doing, and maybe it's not a question for you, Ms. Owens, I think it's a question for you, what are we doing for those students that are affected by that, at least 50% of the police interaction? And I truly believe, and I'm on a number of committees in the community, not necessarily committees, but groups, that look at bullying, and I don't think we do enough for those children being affected by bullying. I think this is an excuse for numerous students to just talk their way through a discipline action. I have felt that way, as you know, since this came about. And I would like to see us start doing more with grants, et cetera, to help those affected by bullying, because it's out of control. Thank you.
If I may just make one comment. So one of the things that the Juvenile Review Board does utilize is the restorative practices and restorative circles. And so there are avenues, if there is, if there are victims involved in whatever, I don't know what it's charges, or whatever the reason was that the young person came to the Juvenile Review Board, we do have... We do have means by which to go through the school system and say, if they were victims involved, please, would you pass this information along to them? And if they would like to participate in a restorative circle, they can contact us and do so. So, there are means by which that we are, that we are actively trying to work to restore the harm that these young people have caused.
And that's fine, that that's the charter. It's great that that's the charter. But those students are truly affected by bullying are no way going to participate under the threat that they're under to participate in this program. Not a chance. And that's why I'm saying we need to do more for the other students who are affected by this. And I don't think we do enough.
I concur, and I think that's why the district has looked at social-emotional learning and also the Ruler, which are different social-emotional curriculums. I know Michelle Baker and myself went down to the Seeling Institute down at Yale for Ruler training. So, we're looking at that as a program and possibly piloting that in a couple of schools. We have the Wingman, Dylan's Wings for Change. I know a lot of the pre-K8 schools are doing that type of a program. It's more about a mentoring and buddy program. So, we are, we are expanding, our first line of defense is to really expand the teacher, teacher and staff knowledge base, and then move from there. So, when we look at, like, programs like Ruler or PATH, as our specific programs.
Okay, then, we need to bring that to the public.
Absolutely.
Because I have sat with various groups in the community to discuss this. And a few of us commissioners do go to those. There's never any central office staff to present anything we're trying to do. And it's publicized, and, like I said, a few of us, Commissioner Sweeney's been at some, Commissioner Soren has been at some, Commissioner, Vice President Harvey's been at some, my co-partner here has been at some, but central office staff has.
President Brown has been at some.
And President Brown has been at some.
I went to a couple of long group meetings.
What?
I went to a couple of long group meetings.
All right, so, the commissioners are showing up at these meetings.
Yes.
But those of us that I'm hearing now may be going to courses to learn are not. So, our community thinks we are not involved with trying to solve the bullying issue.
And we most certainly are committed to that.
Well, I think what I just explained tells our community, well, PPIs, that's, that's fine, okay.
It's a framework.
We're going to give a student a free soda. All right? That's not going to take care of bullying.
No, absolutely not.
So, if you're going to courses that can bring information back to the community, we need to see that presence. We need to see those presentations. We have not received any presentations before this board for anti-bullying. The only time I've seen it is when I'm in the community. And the community advocates are very big on this subject.
And it goes into, it's more about the school climate, the culture and climate of the building, and creating that positive climate and what that takes to create that climate in your building. Because if you have a positive school climate, you are going to have positive peer interactions.
Bullying does not stop at the school doors.
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not. And there's far-reaching effects of bullying. As a matter of fact, when we went down to Yale, the professor who presented, this basically became his life mission and work because he himself was bullied. So, the whole Ruler approach.
Please bring this back to us.
No, absolutely. We.
The commissioners that we have gone to these meetings, yeah, we can show our support, but it is the central office staff that is going out and having these courses, lectures, whatever it is you're going to, we need to get back. We need to see this become part of the regular curriculum.
Absolutely.
To stop this, stop would be a dream for bullying. Do something, at least, to, other than excuses. To create excuses for those doing the bullying is not my plan.
And I'll be honest, last year, we, and we're continuing with our work with restorative practices in creating a positive school climate, every school in this district has a team that has been trained. And now, we're moving forward, so that it starts within the classroom, doing circles. I know that Ms. Cochi had talked about doing circles and having a talking stick. So, we're, we're really trying to educate the staff, bring that back to the building level, provide more training. I know myself and Mrs. Buckley and Mrs. Baker, we have talked about taking the whole restorative piece and rolling it out and looking at, you know, bringing that to all the staff, to the students, because that will create a climate where students feel safe.
Okay, it needs to be accelerated. We have had the worst effect of bullying in this district shown to us in the last couple of years. The worst. And when I spoke before basketball camp, that was about anti-bullying, I said to them, you need to speak up, because you'll feel real bad the next day if one of your fellow students commits suicide. And I was real honest with these kids. And this district has seen that.
That's right.
We're at that point. Please accelerate that program. We spend way too much time pacifying those that are committing this. We need to start worrying about the 95% that are not doing this. We spend way too much time on the few that are causing the problems. Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you. I was just about ready to jump out of my seat. I, I know this is not, you know, we're talking about another, actually, another topic, but Wendy and Dr. Ruffin, first of all, I don't need to go to a program in the community to know about bullying and what's happening with bullying and how that affects our kids. We need to step it up, okay? Just to echo what Commissioner Tom Vanstone is saying. We can talk about theories, we can talk about, oh, what we're doing in the class, but it's not doing anything with those kids who are being affected on a daily basis, okay, with bullying. And we need, in this district, to pick it up. This now, okay? Whatever, if there's a word that emphasizes now more better than what I'm doing, then fine. But we can no longer say, this is what we're doing in the classroom, this is what we, Jackie Davis was, was out and, and was in those, those sessions, okay? And actually witnessed these kids, they couldn't even get through a testimony, they were crying. So, we have got to do better. So, I would like to see Dr. Ruffin, I want to see something in our workshops, what we're doing as far as bullying and, and what we're doing, restorative practices, et cetera, to make the climate, yes, you're talking about climate, it's definitely climate. I think we have a proposal for a position with school climate and how we're going, that person would be responsible for that in the school district. But we need to pick this up, and we need to pick this up now. Enough with the theories. I'm tired of hearing theories. I'm tired of hearing about what we're doing in the classrooms. I'm tired of hearing about what we're doing with groups. We need to do something now and make it effective. We need to review our policies, because I don't think those policies are being followed. And we need to have some accountability. Thank you.
Okay, this is a very passionate issue, and I, I know that everybody has a piece of it, but I think the more, all the stakeholders work together, the community, the parents, we all have to take responsibility for making sure our kids are safe. And I think you can see that we're all passionate about it. So, I look forward to working with everybody to make this happen in our community. Thank you. Okay. All right, next to the money person, Doreen Biola.
So, before you is the final status report of our budget for fiscal year 18. Just so you know, this is unaudited. We just actually completed closing out our books at the end of August. And we did report our expenditures, our yearly expenditure report to the state September 4th on Monday, or, sorry, Tuesday. That would have been for local, federal, and all-state funding. So, this is just kind of where our final numbers are. I just want to bring a point, just to kind of go back to when this budget was put together, that we did not have a state budget until November, actually, October 31st, it was finalized. So, there was a lot of cost-conscious efforts put in to hold back certain items, not knowing where the state budget was going to take us or what we were going to get. That also includes some of our programs that are grant-funded. We did not know what we would be getting. At the time, summer school was not funded, so we were holding back in case, and it happened, because it already happened in July, and we didn't get our budget till November, in case we had to cover those costs if that grant didn't come through. So, I just want to make a few points out. I'm proud to say that we did end up with a surplus of the $158 million portion of We did not have to dip into the contingency of the 3.6. Throughout the year, we were not sure, as again, not knowing where some of this budget was going to take us through the funding from the state and federal funds. So, I just want to point out some of the areas where we highlighted surpluses and why. You'll see the utility accounts, we've transferred out of there. So, we're showing surpluses, but the surpluses were larger enough, and that is through the Naresco study and having, you know, efficiencies through our fixtures, our chillers, our boilers, and so on. The white-collar contract, our, most of our clerical, our paraprofessionals, we had a raise increase for them, budgeted. They are now on to their second year of not having a wage increase, so the amount we budgeted was surplus. And obviously, through all vacancies that we've had, we held back certain positions that, if we felt at the time were non-essential, were held back until we felt further comfortable with the budget to allow positions to be filled. Another area, we did receive a rebate of $93,000 out of, for our propane. We applied to the IRS for our excess tax rebate for the fuel, and we received a reimbursement, and that got applied to the expenses in the propane account of $93,000. So, you'll see that that also surplused. We also had projected earlier that we may fall into the red on the out-of-district tuition account for special education. As the year went through, we realized we did not need the, the projection that we had put in. We feared better, but that is always an area that's very variable and we do not know. So, those are some of the bigger areas. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioner Webb?
So, in that, the, the white-collar contract wasn't addressed, and we had a surplus because we had budgeted for potential increases.
Yeah, because, correct.
We're going to carry that over, because we're going to end up paying two years, potentially two years, as we satisfy.
Yeah, so, in the current budget, in fiscal year 19 budget, we do have that accounted for.
Accounted for, for.
For.
Two years, not one year, right?
For two years, I mean.
Because there's going to be a look back.
Correct.
Right, to make them whole?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that we got that in place. The only other thing that I'd like to comment about, having been, you know, I'm probably touching the third rail, but the police protection, when we have sporting events.
Yeah.
Sometimes, the number of officers outnumbers the number of spectators. So, if we could take a serious look at the need to have multiple officers at some events, certainly if it's a premier game and we expect a large crowd, that's a different story. But on a night when Wilby's playing Ansonia.
Right. We do plan.
I mean, I think we should be smart about things like that.
I agree, and I think that was brought up even in the past.
I know I brought it up during the budget negotiations.
Yeah.
I just want to encourage us to take a hard look at that.
Yeah, we, we plan to have a meeting with all of our athletic directors and Mr. Gorman and some of my office staff, you know, within the coming couple of weeks here, so we will definitely address that.
And the other question I have is the impact of the contract we just did for the ABA therapists. Do you see that saving us any money in this, in this current year with those five physicians now moving over as we fill? Or do you think we're just going to be at that budgeted number that we set? I know, I know we're talking about last year's number, I'm just trying to project that into this year.
Into this year, I mean, I think we should see some, you know, some difference and some savings for that.
Okay.
I mean, we're not seeing it yet.
Right.
But I, right, because it's just, it's too early. So, hopefully, throughout the remainder.
So, maybe in January, we'll take a second look at that.
Yeah, so, when we look at the month reports going forward for this fiscal year, we should maybe see that.
Okay. I, I think that's it for now, but I, and not to push you, as you close out last year, an expenditure report for, what would the next expenditure report timeframe cover?
It'll be in October, because what we do is, we start the school year, we do a quarterly one. So, we'll do July, August, and September together.
Okay.
And then, after that, it'll be every month.
Okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Vanstone?
This one?
Whichever.
Don't take my question. So, Jason's question is, actually, first thing, I think, I don't have many questions, because I think you did, you really did do a great job of preparing us through the year to see these projections. So, I really appreciate that effort. The one area I would like to understand better, though, is instructional supplies. What qualifies as that? Because we do hear a lot that teachers spend out of pocket. And we have a surplus of $270,000. So, what would qualify, and is there any mechanism for a teacher to come back and say, I spent $200 on things for my room, can I get reimbursed?
You know, I hear that, I'm, I'm not really sure why that happens, because it's not where, I mean, if that's happening and they're addressing it to their principal, and I'm hoping that the principal would at least address it down to central office as to, you know, the necessity of what they need. You know, they should, we, they, they are given the opportunity to buy all the necessities for their classroom, right at the beginning of the school year. We do put a, kind of a soft freeze on, and especially through this budget year, when we, you know, obviously didn't know where our final numbers would be, on things that are non-essential. But the necessities are provided, and the budgets are given right in the beginning, so the necessity should be purchased. I'm not really sure if there's excess, I'm not sure what's, you know, what amount a teacher is providing for each classroom based on what we give them, because we give a per-pupil cost based on the number of, of students there, so.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that, Superintendent, because it has come up before, certainly, and I've actually seen notifications on Facebook where teachers are putting up these FundMe accounts, or whatever, whatever they're called, I don't know what they're called, looking to be able to supply their classroom. So, if we have a $270,000 surplus and some teacher is doing a FundMe thing to get, you laughing at my?
Yes, it's called GoFundMe.
Okay. So, we're going to GoFundMe. I'm going to put up one for myself. But you see where I'm going?
I do.
I think we need to wonder why this GoFundMe is out there if we have a surplus. Right? We shouldn't, probably shouldn't be doing that, right?
Well, we, we did hold some money into a separate account for district-wide, based on where we would end up here, because, you know, we didn't want to really dip too much into the contingency. We did hold back, it's, like I said, based on some of the summer school or if other grants didn't come in, if the magnets fell short, based on what their final numbers would have been. So, we just tried to play a little conservative.
We, we've been the victim of showing a surplus in the past, also, when freezes were not in our control, which, that was actually some of my curiosity as well, so.
And we did, you know, like I said, ask the schools more for, you know, putting in for the necessities, and some of the things we did question here or there, if they weren't actually something that they needed at that moment in time. However, you know, we never held back anything that was essential into the classroom.
Essential to a definition up here and essential to a definition here are two different things, so. Just a little bit, but I appreciate this. I think you prepared us well for what this was going to look like, so thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to ask that, but I have other questions, too. First of all, thank you. I think having these more regularly than we used to has helped ward off any surprises, so I appreciate the diligence to bring this to us and deal with our questions every couple of months, so I do appreciate that. GIRA program. It is our last year. I did speak to Dave Salato recently about some of the data, want to analyze that as it comes in, but initial information coming in is graduates last year, we tripled the amount of students going to Southern last year than we ever had, than we had the prior year. He's still getting numbers for how many students went to NVCC. As you recall, students that graduated were able to go to Southern four years, free ride NVCC and/or Manchester Community College. So those are some good numbers. We're continuing our upward bound and dual Pell programs. We have an ECHO program where students are earning college credit at Kennedy, and we're continuing our MASC Center program. Fifteen students recruiting, going into manufacturing programming. We started that last year as we received that grant with the partnership with the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board, and we continue to do that this year. Some exciting things happening within the district, so I'm going to call them up, really just three at a time, let them talk about their prospective departments. You have the backup for this. So we'll start off with ELA math and science technology.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're very excited this year to have been able to purchase these new materials for ELA in grades K through 5, and we are now going to be getting them for 6 through 8 as well. So, Mr. Van Stone, I heard you talk a little bit earlier about programs and getting them and the start of the year, and when I spoke earlier with the business office, they were hopeful that all of these purchase orders are going out next week, so we would have a rush on that delivery. So we're hoping within the next two weeks, all the materials will arrive in our schools. They're going to be drop shipped separately. So the teachers are eagerly awaiting them, as are the administrators, as am I, to get those in our hands. You have the bullets here, so I won't read them to you, but I do want you to know that the program comes with so many materials, so many wonderful materials for our kids, and we're really looking at it and working with what are the major pieces we want to make sure that we include and then build into our curriculum, because right now, our curriculum and our resources just need to be aligned a bit tighter. And the new program's going to allow us to do that. So that's some of the work we're doing, and we'll be providing guidance to teachers with what are the things we want to focus on in whole group to really get across to our kids, because like I said, we're going to have ample supplies, I think, more than we've ever had for ELA, particularly K through 8. And then 9 through 12 is what we're going to really focus our sights on for next year, looking at that. And when we went out to RFP for our program for grades 6 through 8, we made sure it was a program that does span up to 12. So not that that has to be a program, but it certainly allows it to be an option if we want to stick with the same sequence that we're putting into 6 through 8.
Good evening, nice to see everyone again. This year, my 10 math coaches have now become STEM coaches because they're going to support the elementary school teachers in science. We got the okay to add two new coaches this year. I have selected them, the grant has been approved. We need to hire new teachers to replace them before they can come out of the classroom, but I'm hoping that that happens within the next couple of weeks. Because we're talking about 12 coaches, we're still going to be a little bit thin, so we're going to focus on those 4th and 5th grade teachers this year and try to build that team of teachers as we implement more science into the younger grades. We're going, this is very exciting for me. So we're going to expand iReady diagnostic testing into the middle schools. We haven't had it. Every child in the comprehensive middle schools will take the same diagnostic test that we've been giving in the elementary schools. 750 students in the comprehensive middle schools will have instructional licenses. So 20 to 25% of the comprehensive middle school population will be getting additional Tier 2 math intervention. Should we have more? Yes. What we did was, the comprehensive middle schools use CIG grant funding to hire one math lab teacher. That gives us two teachers on the unified art schedule to provide an additional, two additional 45-minute periods to those 250 kids per comprehensive middle school, so that they can get math intervention in addition to their regular five math periods. We would like to continue to build that. Darren challenged them to find more time in their schedule, and if they can find more time in the schedule, we'll buy licenses. So I'm pretty excited about that. It's the first time we'll have some real math intervention in the middle school grades. So our 5th grade students from last year, our current 6th grade students, really won't miss a beat. They'll come in, it'll be very familiar to them, and we'll have some real Common Core Smarter Balance-aligned data, because what we found is that test has become very predictive of how students will perform on the Math Smarter Balance piece. So I'm very excited about that this year. In addition, I've contracted with Math Solutions. I've gone to a lot of their PDs, very high-quality math PD, looking at our SAT scores, we need something in high school. And so I contracted with Math Solutions to provide the full-day high school PD days this year. I've also contracted for some coaching days, which I will focus on the Algebra I freshman academies in the comprehensive high schools. And for two years, I've been trying to find high school math coaches, and very late in the summer, I did find a high school math coach. She started first day of school, she's going around, meeting everyone, getting schedules now. Not sure how I can most effectively use one person with all the high schools, but again, I really think the focus needs to be on Algebra I. And so we'll have a little bit of help there with a high school coach and working in partnership with Math Solutions.
By the middle of this year, we should have a NGSS-aligned new curriculum working in grades K through 11, all starting up this year. So it's a, it's a big ambitious undertaking, it's going to be a challenging year, but it's a thrilling year at the same time. Probably the most significant is the elementary, as you know. We've contracted with HMH, Houghton Mifflin, and we've gone from probably having no supplies or very few supplies in some schools to having mountains of supplies, kits, of books. It's an excellent, excellent resource. We initially were going to start science, pardon me, in the elementaries, just in grades 4 and 5, but Mr. Henry, who's largely responsible for implementing this, said, "What the heck? We bought this whole thing, why don't we start it all the way up and down the line?" So from K through 3, even though they're only having it once a week, they're going to be doing a full engineering unit through the year and perhaps more if they have time. So if all goes well, we'll have kindergarten kids solving problems with engineering. This should be pretty exciting. In grades 4 and 5, they have it three times a week, so they're able to do more units. We're starting off with 4, they can go up to 7 in, according to the resource, but they're doing a life science unit, an engineering unit, an earth and space science, and a physical science unit. So luckily, in grades 4 and 5, I've been working with them and Jan, and they're amazing people. They've been trained now, or they've received training in the next-generation science standards, as well as the HMH resource. And so I think they'll really be the primary professional development, ongoing support that the elementary teachers get. In the middle and high schools, we sort of took a bit of a U-turn, but I think for a good purpose. We initially wrote our own middle school curriculum, which was a very ambitious undertaking, and if I do say so myself, the teachers did an excellent job with it. It did not, however, have detailed lesson plans with it or really comprehensive assessments, so. I'm talking to Darren at the end of the screen. So we switched over from the one we wrote to the CREG curriculum for middle school and high school. The CREG curriculum was written by some 50 different districts in the state of Connecticut. It was an effort to not keep reinventing the wheel for individual towns and districts. It's very comprehensive, it's got excellent assessments that match the state assessments closely, and the teachers on their first glimpse of it were excited and very grateful that it provided as much support as it did. So we're giving them a little grace period in the high schools, and middle schools are given a marking period to kind of look it over, do what they've been doing before, get used to the new curriculum, but then start it in the middle schools at the end of the first marking period, and in high schools either at the end of the first marking period or the end of the second marking period. We're giving them a little grace period. But by mid-year, we should be up and running in all of those different grades. Just a brief note, we're going to do the robotics again this year. Louise Brown got the Connecticut Community Foundation grant renewed, so we're going into the four middle schools again, and, I'm sorry, three middle schools at Enlightenment, and putting seven teams hopefully in competition at the middle school level. In the area of tech ed, we have one exciting initiative at Kennedy, which is a drone pilot program, where we bought some pretty fancy equipment for the visual video production teacher. I didn't want drones flying all over the place in all the schools-
That's not funny.
But I would like drones flying all over the place in an organized way, so down the road. So this is sort of a trial balloon, that bad pun, I guess. She's going to take video photography, and if all goes well, we can expand that. We're also looking to expand our certification opportunities. We have an excellent start in auto, where we've got some fancy on-the-car brake lathe equipment that they can get certified in, they can certify in air conditioning and emptying freon out of cars. And we want to try to expand that, so the kids have certifications when they graduate from high school, so they can, if they want, go right into some good-paying jobs in auto shops and throwing. And with Commissioner Wadd's help, we have done an inventory of the Perkins equipment, we're in the process of doing it as required by Perkins regulation. I'd like to thank a number of the board members who are on the CTE advisory board. That will play an important role going forward as we set priorities for the next application for the 2019-20 Perkins grant application. And that's probably it for me. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't have any questions, there's just a comment.
Commissioner Wadd.
First of all, thank you to all three of you. I was uniquely involved with Mr. Reed in the CTE presentation, and during the opportunity to have the conversation, some of my staff participated, and one of the things we discovered is the names of things can discourage somebody. If you call it one thing, people glance right over, and if you call it something else and give it a little flash, it may draw kids' attention.
There was a lot of back and-
Opportunity for us to share what other districts are doing and what workforce needs are in the region. So to your point, HVAC, the brake stuff, the auto mechanic fields are big, but the opportunity for our kids to have CTE experiences, we're working to gain employer support, to have opportunities for our kids to go shadow after school, or, as some of you might have seen the email, we're going to roll out a future bankers-type thing. It's not necessarily tech ed, but it's educational opportunities that lead to career pathways. Tonight, we're renewing Mr. Kennedy's opportunity. We did have 15 students participate in the summer program of the manufacturing program at MASC. All those kids finished, and eight of the 15 were seniors who actually got jobs and are now working in manufacturing throughout the region. So that type of interaction is really important, so. And also, within manufacturing, it's not only science, it's math. Math is key. And I always said I never understood why I needed to learn Algebra I until somebody showed me a CNC machine. So I just wanted to thank all of you for your efforts, but it was a privilege to participate on your committee, and I think it was, a lot of benefit was made.
You put that in the past tense, but we're hoping you'll continue this year.
Just hope we will.
Okay, great job. We look forward to great results and much more.
We have three more departments, preschool and special education and P and health. Adela unfortunately had a health incident, so she is not able to be here tonight, but I would be happy to fill the board in with what she gave me through email.
Good evening. I guess it's me. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to report on pre-K, and I'm very, very excited to let you know that we have 684 students registered in our pre-K program. We still have open slots, so we will be filling those. Our classes this year were arranged based on a new screening tool that was implemented. We screened just about every child that registered between January and August, so our classes are very, are very demographically and racially balanced. We've gotten a lot of feedback from our teachers that this is the best, this has been a really good year for the children, even though they've only been in school half-days, and we've only had two full days of week, or two full days of school. The children are in a good place, the teachers don't see any unforeseen problems with them at this point, everybody's doing well, and I think a lot of that goes to my predecessors' instituting the screening tool that we used. We're going to be starting with a new phonemic awareness program that will piggyback into the kindergarten, and we're looking forward to that. The staff was very enthusiastic about it at the PD, all the pre-K teachers were trained in it, they're looking forward to using it. There is a lot of excitement at that PD. We are, another initiative that we're working on this year for the coming year is collaborating with our community sites with our EIS referral form, so that there's a more cohesive connection with them. We want to hear their concerns. We're revising our form that goes out to our community sites and our preschools, and we'll be meeting with them next week on that. And last, last we have, oh, we have two more things. We have a second cohort of our pyramid training that's going to be starting up, that we had one cohort go through last year, and that works toward the idea of restorative practices at the preschool level, and social-emotional learning, and helping teachers better prepare, better, be better prepared for working with the challenging students in the district. So we have one cohort set to go to Tier 2, we have a new group coming on. There's also going to be professional development for our teachers, for our-
Our classes this year were arranged based on a new screening tool that was implemented. We screened just about every child that registered between January and August. So, our classes are very demographically and racially balanced. We've gotten a lot of feedback from our teachers that this has been a really good year for the children, even though they've only been in school half-days. And we've only had two full days of week, or two full days of school. The children are in a good place. The teachers don't see any unforeseen problems with them at this point. Everybody's doing well. And I think a lot of that goes to my predecessors instituting the screening tool that we used. We're going to be starting with a new phonemic awareness program that will piggyback into the kindergarten. And we're looking forward to that. The staff was very enthusiastic about it at the PD. All the pre-K teachers were trained in it. They're looking forward to using it. There is a lot of excitement at that PD. We are, another initiative that we're working on this year for the coming year is collaborating with our community sites with our EIS referral form so that there's a more cohesive connection with them. We want to hear their concerns. We're revising our form that goes out to our community sites and our preschools. And we'll be meeting with them next week on that. And last, we have, oh, we have two more things. We have a second cohort of our pyramid training that's going to be starting up that we had one cohort go through last year. And that works toward the idea of restorative practices at the preschool level in social-emotional learning and helping teachers better prepare, better, be better prepared for working with the challenging students in the district. So, we have one cohort set to go to Tier Two. We have a new group coming on. There's also going to be professional development for our teachers, for our administrators who have gone through that process. And then our final, our final one that we're looking forward to is the preschool assessment coming from the state. We're going to be, we're going to be working on that. It hasn't been released yet. There's little snippets of it out there. But as soon as the assessment for preschool comes out, we'll be working on that. It's called the DOTS Assessment Program. So, as soon as we get permission, we'll get going on that for preschool.
Maureen, I just want to ask, in terms of where are we with the curriculum? Because I know that-
That's why I came to the mic.
Okay. Because I'm very concerned about the curriculum. Go ahead.
I know, that's why I came, before she asked the question.
You knew.
That was good. I kind of knew that it was going to come. We are working on RFP to bring, last year, we had, we used some of the money from the grant that you approved earlier to do a curriculum audit. Curriculum audit of not only the Waterbury Public Schools, but a curriculum audit of all of the sites in Waterbury that receive school readiness funding. Not surprising, many different curriculums out there. And there is a severe need to write a more common curriculum that aligns to the early learning developmental standards that are now the pre-K standards. And so, we look forward to writing that RFP, continuing that work, if not for the Waterbury Public Schools, for all the sites. Because the pre-K curriculum does need to get updated. And it needs to get updated this year.
Thank you, Darren.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. I just have one question on the pre-K. You say you have 684 students in pre-K presently. Are there any slots left, or does that fill everything up?
There are still slots left. And right now, we're weeding out the numbers of children, we're weeding out the numbers of children who haven't, who have actually not shown up. So, we're in the process of calling those families, finding out, do they intend to send them? And if not, we have new students ready to place right into it.
So, is it, it's not like you're looking for students. You have students-
We have students. Oh, we have students. They're coming in every day. We have students.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Can I just jump in? We're always looking for students. So, even if they come down to the Office of Early Childhood and we don't have room, we can find a location in a private setting. For example, at the YMCA or the ARC or at Easter Seals. So, I don't want to discourage just because Waterbury Public Schools is almost that capacity. I want to encourage the public that if you have a three-year-old or a four-year-old and you go to the Office of Early Childhood, which is on 38 Church Street, we will find a placement for your child. Okay?
So, any student in, any four-year-old student in the city of Waterbury is eligible to go to pre-K in the city of Waterbury?
Yes.
In a program somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, that number that Maureen mentioned does not include the school readiness-funded slots. So, altogether, between the school readiness-funded slots and the Waterbury Public Schools, we have over 1,300 three- and four-year-olds in qualified programs in Waterbury. So, the Office of Early Childhood does Herculean work bringing all those families together there and registering them, as Darren said, either in a school readiness program, a private provider, or our own programs, which includes school readiness-funded, Title I funding, alliance funding. So, we have a lot of funding sources that we're dealing with.
Okay.
So, it's great. We've seen a real, I mean, we're very excited. Great job.
It's good. And we do, we do have the resources. It's a nice printed paper for, to refer the parents to if we do run out of spots. Right now, we're in very good shape. And I think all of our students that we have yet to place will get placed.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's been, it's been a very fast start this year. State Street started off with 108 students, including five new classrooms from pre-K to 12. We're very happy to have an assistive technology team in the district. It's been created this year to provide expert assistance on low and high-tech, low and high-tech capabilities for our students with special needs and 504 if necessary. We purchased the Max Scholar Program. It's an Orton-Gillingham-based program for children with learning disabilities and reading, and specifically in dyslexia. There were over 50 teachers and special education teachers in the district who were trained on August 23rd. The training will be ongoing throughout the school year. It will be implemented slowly. They've been given homework. So, we are going to get it off the ground within the next couple of weeks. We also purchased the eating curriculum for our children in our autism programs and our essential skills and scope classrooms for our children who have intellectual disabilities. What we're finding was the iPads and the technology that was being implemented for the really young group of children with autism, they needed something a little bit more. They needed something more hands-on, more concrete. So, that was something that we purchased this year for them. Both programs are scientifically research-based and were researched by teachers before they were purchased. Couple of things that we're very excited about this year is we're working with workforce to provide paid internships for our special education students ages 16 to 21, mostly our older group of students, 18, 19, 20-year-olds. And also, our special education teachers and our behavior-disordered learning centers will be getting restorative practice training, the full two days. So, we're very excited about this year and looking forward to it.
Okay. Last but not least, Mr. Gorman.
Hello. How's everyone doing tonight?
Great.
I don't have a lot of programs to announce because we didn't go that route this year. But we're trying to tweak some things that are going well. I try not to tinker too badly with things when they are moving in the right direction. A couple of focuses that we want to make you aware of is we are moving our testing window for fitness testing to the spring as opposed to our historical time in the fall. That's primarily as a result of how the state is collecting the data and at what times they post it to determine what a 90% participation rate is. And so, that's why we decided to move it. I do have one program that we're going to hopefully be talking more about and recruiting one school to kind of step up and be a pilot for an asthma camp. It's something that's been done in New Britain for the last several years. And to put it in its easiest form, the kids come into an assembly-type atmosphere. They build an artificial lung. They, you know, learn about how their lungs work. They start to look at their own treatment plan for their asthma and how they can manage that and also communicate that to their parents, as well as to each other. So, it's a very interesting thing. New Britain does it in conjunction with the Yukon Medical Center. I've entered into some negotiations with North Tuck Valley Community College Respiratory Program. So, it looks like there's some fertile ground there for us to develop a partnership with them to get this off the ground. And if it works well, this could be something that would be a benefit to NBCC as well as to expand it throughout other schools in the district if it goes off well, which I anticipate that it will. I think I had mentioned to you when I reported to you over the summer, one of the things we're looking for this year also is to have a building-level representative who can communicate building-level information in terms of compliance with our district wellness policy. It's part of what is being required of our food service department, who is probably undergoing an audit this year. So, it's very important that we get that in place as soon as possible. Actually, should have had it in place last year. I accept responsibility for that not happening. So, it is something that we do want to tweak and put into place this year. One last thing. I've been talking with Tara Battistoni and also had some talks with Will Zuda. We're going to see if we can put kids' fitness test results in, by child, into Power School so that we can start developing really a useful archive of year-to-year information that is student-based, that is student-identified. We're one of the last tests that remains that is still just a broad snapshot of a class. If we can somehow pull this off, that would be a tremendous thing for our department to be able to make that student-specific. And it will help our efforts to continue to work with kids on more customized ways to help them achieve their optimum wellness, not only while they're with us for life. And other than that, we're just doing what we do.
Well, the portrait of the graduate, they want to learn how to cook, so.
I keep reminding people, I have that little cone on my desk that says, "The Department of Great Expectations and Minimal allocations." But we're going to make it work no matter what. But don't forget about us. We're going to need some money sometime, so.
I like that. Any questions? Okay, it's all good. Thank you. Okay, next on the list is the summer school report. Mr. Schwartz is up again.
Good evening again. Usually, I have Mike Theriot and Ray Herrera here. Unfortunately, Mike is, for us, Mike is coaching tonight, so he was unable to make it. So, we gave him the pass on that. And unfortunately, Mr. Herrera was in an accident earlier today and wasn't able to make it as well. So, I will do the best I can to present. We did talk about this. You probably have some similar questions that I have. But I will go through this information with you. Many of you are familiar with the elementary summer school program. You do have the backup. This year, we did only have three sites. We had Gil Martin, Duggan, and Carrington. We were anticipating the floors being fixed at Reed. Therefore, we moved sites when we were informed of that. We made it work. But it was, it was something that we would look forward to not doing again because we do like using the Reed School. And because of that, it is so important for that community. And so, but we did make it work in those three sites. As you can see, 906 out of the 1,023 students that were, that signed up for summer school, attended on a regular basis. We served 420 special education students this summer. 800 students showed up eight or more days, which is about half of the days of summer school. We do have some math information for you. We did have a KN1 pre- and post-test for math. In second, and for those that were in second and third grade, what we're waiting to do is they do take an assessment within the month of September. And that assessment does track the student and how they performed, not only last year, but how they performed in the beginning of this year. And we could compare if the students had any summer slip. So, we will have that information this month to see if and how summer school either prevented the summer slip and/or contributed to some sort of gains, as it has in the past, when we've done this presentation later in the year. ELA, very similar to the math, is that we do look at information, usually not only in the end of the year, but also in the beginning of the spring testing. But we did have some comparisons. We did have specific tests that were given this year in ELA as well. In math, we did go up, like I said, in that KN1, 20% from the pre-post test in KN1. And then in ELA data, you can see that the chart there talks about the increase for phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, 11% increase, 68% increase. So, as you can see, there was an impact for that short amount of time that they are in the summer school. But we're really looking more towards how they do in the spring and then how they come back to us in the fall. So, really preventing that summer slip is actually a success if they maintained where they were. High school summer school, this was, this was, this was great. No tuition for Waterbury Public School students for the first time since I've been here. We usually, this summer, we enrolled 288 students, which is, which is up. Last year, I believe, we had exactly 100 students, and it was $160 per course. So, we almost tripled the amount of students that took advantage. 454 credit opportunities were achieved this summer. You can see the breakdown by the, by the, by the school of who attended. One thing that we noticed is for the schools that were a little bit lower, there's one school there that I looked at that I was, that took me, you know, took a second look at. I think that, you know, that's a conversation to have with the counseling department, making sure that they do a better job of getting in and making sure that students are taking advantage of this. It could have been, could be somewhat of the location. I mean, Williams, it is in the center of the city, so many of our students can get there. I'm not sure why Willby was so much lower. But that is a discussion that I've had with Wendy and Wendy will have with that counseling department as well. Because that is a number that's too low compared to Crosby and Kennedy. But we did have triple the enrollment, so we are, we were encouraged by that. You can see the enrollment by course. Many of those, Algebra, Algebra I being the most popular. And obviously, the English is 9 through 12. Were also very popular to ensure students are on track to graduate. The results, you know, Algebra I continued to be a difficult course for people, for students to pass for many of reasons. It could be that they just didn't require, they didn't attain the basic skills to get through it the first time. Many of them went through for it again. 63% of the students did pass that. So, that was, although not as high as some of the other courses, that was something to look into, including some of that. I was a little surprised by the history as well, many of the students not passing the history courses. So, that's something I've asked Mr. Herrera to look at, too, specifically the course instructor, how supportive they were during that time. But again, this is a short time in the summer. So, unless the student's focused and achieving, using the Edgenuity Online Credit Recovery Program, and they're doing all the work that's associated with it, history tends to have a little bit more work associated with it. But it is something to look at again in that, so we can compare to next year. This is different than what we've done last year. I don't know if we gave you all these numbers. So, this is something, this is something that we will track year by year by year to ensure that we are improving. Big takeaway from the high school was the ability to do it for no cost for Waterbury Public School students. And triple the amount of students practically coming to attend.
Great. Any questions? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Darren, I'm just looking at one of these. It hit me because it's the last one. It says, "Computers in high school."
Yep.
The high school. And it's two students.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So, the Edgenuity program, what we can do is we can have a certified teacher in there that's certified in multiple areas. But what they can do is take the Edgenuity online credit. And so, it's, they follow the Edgenuity program online, and they have to do the coursework online. As long as the teacher can ensure that the student is progressing through the program appropriately, they can earn the credit for that class. So, it's not just two kids in a room and a teacher teaching them computers. They're actually following the online course to do that. So, it might, it might look like there was only two kids in a classroom and there was a teacher. But it is an online course that the teacher follows with the student.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you up for the next one as well?
Am I?
Department of Education's annual report.
I don't know what that is.
It was very well done. I did read it. I guess that's just for our information. I think everybody, everybody got it online. It was very comprehensive. Good things are happening. But I guess, I guess that was just for our information. Okay. All right. Commissioner Van Stone. Number 14.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy Committee for this board is in charge of our bylaws. And one of the things we look at every couple of years is the quote-unquote effectiveness of our committees. Something we've been doing, at least as long as I've been here, you know, 10 years or so. And one of the things we did last time around in a previous incarnation of this board is we collapsed the amount of committees we had. Some of us who have been here for a while remember the days when we had 13 to 15 committees, many of which overlapped. So, last time we went through this process, we brought that number down to the current eight we have now and rolled certain responsibilities into other committees. In the process this year, while we didn't necessarily think any of our committees were ineffective, we once again saw the opportunity where certain committees held similar responsibilities. And at least as currently constituted, almost had similar bodies on the committees. So, what came out of the committee this time for the board to consider is the combination of what is currently known as the Building Committee and the Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, creating one new committee with all those responsibilities called the Committee on Building and School Facilities, quite originally. Taking all the responsibilities of the two committees, combining them together, you know, depending on where we are in our building phases. And I think Vice- depending on where we are in our building phases, and I think Vice President Harvey and I talked about this in the committee, right now, we're not building a whole lot of schools. This may not have been a smart move seven, ten years ago when we had one or two schools popping up on every corner. Now that that has died down and most of our building work is renovations or closing out buildings, this might be a more effective use of time combining those two committees together. The second pair of committees that was discussed to merge was the Committee on Legislation as well as the Committee on Policy. You know, these two committees, again, have similar roles and responsibilities. Combining the two and wrapping each of those roles and responsibilities into a new committee called the Committee on Policy and Legislation was thought by the Policy Committee to be something that, again, we could do relatively easy. Again, the two, the makeup of both of those committees, at least as it's currently situated, is relatively similar. I think we have four of the commissioners sitting on both, so there's really not any upheaval in the current, at least as it's currently situated. And going forward, obviously, they'd be sat as new, so forward incarnations of this board would do that as it may. Those were the two things that we thought, at least at this time, to bring forward. That would make sense. We are far enough away from an election, so there's no potential new people coming on board that might want a say in this. So doing this now, you know, a full, you know, sixteen months away from the next election, we thought was wise to take any, I'm not too sure if there is a political angle on either of these gigs, but to take that away. So that is what is coming now before you for the first time to view and comment on, as is required in the bylaws, we have to do this at least twice. So that is, those are the two recommendations coming out of policy right now, the combination of those two committees.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted, Commissioner what? If I might, thank you. So it's, we vote at this meeting or we vote at the next meeting?
We'll be at the next meeting. This is the first informational time we talk, we can see and talk about it. The second time we see it, which would be at the next regular meeting, we would vote on it.
Which is on the twentieth?
The twentieth, yes.
I'll take your word for that, sure.
Okay. So I guess, and I think it's a great idea because it certainly streams, I guess my, my point, the question that I had is, when we talk about building and grounds, that's going to be the use of the facilities, right, as well as the buildings themselves?
Yes.
So at some point, I would like to have a discussion about, and it's near and dear to Commissioner Thomas Vanstone's heart, is the appropriate charging and use of our facilities by outside organizations that tend to turn a profit off of some of the use of our buildings. And I just want to make sure that we start to be proactive. The nonprofits who are doing it to create opportunity for youth, to keep them off the street is one thing, but where we have people using the facilities, charging admissions, charging enrollments, charging for spectators, I think we need to begin to take a serious look at charging some type of fee for them to use that. And I just wanted to make sure as we move the committee structure around that we redouble our efforts to address that issue.
If I may, Madam President, you're preaching to the choir. As the current chairman of building, I would say pretty, pretty pleased, I'd love to be the chairman of Buildings and Grounds, and I would love to move that discussion along as well as all the other things I think that would fall under the auspices of that committee.
You can have it. Thank you. I just had a question and refresh my memory. Right now, we have five members per committee.
Yes.
Is that, can we expand that? Is that in the bylaws?
We can expand it.
Or we can have as many as we want?
It's a minimum of three, one of which has to be a member of the minority party. There is no stipulation for a maximum.
All right, okay. Okay. Any questions? We're good? Okay, thank you. Next is the use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Use of school facilities by outside organizations or waivers. Next is superintendent's update to the board, and we will have an executive session this evening, a short one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we have to move into executives.
She's doing her update.
Oh, it's just your update?
My update?
I do have a very brief update.
Okay.
You know, being last on the agenda, I don't want to put you to sleep, but I do have a few things I need to share with you.
You've been relatively quiet tonight.
I also wanted to let everyone know that we did at the very beginning of the year, as part of the professional development, have a restorative practice training. We did have someone from the State Department come in to make certain that all of our administrators, I believe some leadership team members were also invited as well, so that we could begin to develop that process as a collaborative. I think that the school leaders are ultimately responsible for making certain that it permeates the building, and principals need to know what restorative practices actually encompasses so that they could also be a part of it and engage other members of the staff. Restorative practices, it's not something that you do to people, it's not something that a person does, it's a whole-school approach to being able to respond to the needs of your entire school. And it also has an effective way of being able to address bullying. I also want to begin to gather any kind of bullying data that we may have. At certain levels, it really is only a report directly to the school. It only gets to the district level, it becomes a recurrence, and it becomes a particularly violent type of behavior. Some of that information will eventually get to my office, but it doesn't typically get to the office of the superintendent until it gets to be this reoccurring incident that potentially can rise to even more serious effects. I can, however, request from the schools individual reports as they begin to get them so that we could know the number of bullying incidents that we may have in the schools, and I will begin to do that. Also, in visiting the schools, I've visited perhaps half of them by now. Many have talked about their restorative practices and beginning their circles, and I was very pleased to hear that they are beginning that practice, the language is there, and I look forward to continuing to visit, to see that in actual practice. In terms of the budget for teachers and for supplies, we do want to look at how we're utilizing Title I funds, because we're a Title I district, and Title I funds are allowable to be able to allow teachers and schools to purchase the materials that they need. It is perhaps, and I'm only throwing this out because if someone is saying they're not getting those resources, I think that we need to look at how we're allocating funds that are being given to us through federal funds. And we'll look at that for next year's budget, and I will look at that very carefully this year as I analyze how our funding is being allocated across the district for many programs. I know that we have a varying degrees of balancing various funding sources that come into the district, and so I'm paying attention to that very carefully to see our return on the investment. That's why I sent a memo out to the board a couple of weeks ago that some of the positions that were vacant, I have frozen. It's not because I don't want to fund them. I do believe we have some positions that are redundant, and I want to take a look at whether we're getting a return on investment for those before we continue to add more positions, but we really don't know if it is an effective way of being able to meet the needs of the schools. Also, we've talked about a staffing plan. I still do not have a staffing plan. I do not know to be able to share with you, or to share with my staff, exactly how individual schools are being funded in terms of positions. And that's going to be very critical. I would say that you're probably going to see me very cautious about approving any budget until we really know what we have and how effective it is for individual schools as we want to see some progress. We have various positions, they're called various different titles, and they come from various different funding sources, but we want to be able to see, I have to see this for every single school to be able to best manage the funding that we get across the district. And so I wanted you to understand why I'm hesitating, well, I didn't hesitate, I put a stop to adding additional positions at this point, freezing some of the ones that we have currently as vacant. They were unfilled, so no school has suffered as a result of that, it's just we didn't add those. Also, I have asked our curriculum department, and I want to thank Darren and the entire curriculum and instruction staff for the excellent reports today, but I've also asked that for our literacy resources, that we're getting our wondrous curriculum, that we also send materials home with children. I think it's very important that if we're making this large investment, that we also have a commitment that we send materials that are aligned to what we're teaching in the classroom to children at home so that they could do homework.
Great.
And so I may be coming back and asking for a little bit more money because we want to make certain that we not only have class sets, but we have that opportunity for children to really take home materials. I think it's really important, and especially when we look at our student performance, we want it to improve, but we also have to make certain that we give the students what they need to be able to learn outside of the classroom. And finally, the, you know, as we look at the assistant superintendent positions, the position actually closed on September the fourth, and so it moves on through the civil service process, and as soon as I have any follow-ups, I will be sharing that with you. But there were several candidates that applied, and so I look forward to what the civil service process will look like so that I can give you an update and maybe very soon be able to tell you, you know, who's going to be joining the team. And that's, I also, I think, since this is one of our last meetings before Mr. Brinker will be retiring, I wanted to share with all of you and also to extend a thank you to him for the services that he has provided to our district as the chief operating officer and the director of personnel. I understand that September twelfth is going to be his official last day. We do want to celebrate the time that he has been with the district internally as well as, you know, to extend to you, we want to do that. Bob doesn't particularly like celebrations like that, but we're going to celebrate because I think that's what we do when people leave us and we know in advance and it's a retirement. But I did want to extend a thank you to him for the services he has provided to us and to note that his last day with the district will be September the twelfth.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you. I just want to let you know, Dr. Ruffin, I informed Mr. Brinker, he could not retire until we had a full day of school.
I think that's tomorrow.
Because he texts me whenever we have a half-day to let me know. I said, "You can't leave until we have a full day." So, we have a full day tomorrow?
It looks like we're going to have a full day tomorrow.
Okay, so Bob, Bob may retire.
I just want to remind people that we are having our board retreat on Saturday, September fifteenth, at the Palace Theater of the Poli Club, which I believe is on the third floor. It's next to the boardroom?
It is the boardroom.
Oh, the boardroom, yes, okay. I thought it was in the Poli Club.
The boardroom is not the Poli Club.
Oh, I thought we were in the Poli Club. Oh, okay, the boardroom. We were there before, okay, I know where that is. We're going, so it starts at eight-thirty, and I hope everybody can make it.
Perhaps Carrie could send us which door to enter, because obviously, the main doors won't be open at that point, so if we could.
They're supposed to, um, the box office is supposed to be open at that time.
The box office, okay. Okay. Great. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be scattered.
So far, I haven't heard anybody who's not coming, so we should have a good group.
I am. We have executives.
No?
We should do it. Got me. Check. Don't we just have?
Okay, now we're going to have executive session, okay?
Madam President. Thank you, everybody. I make a motion to convene an executive session for the purposes of discussing concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Darren, where should we go for executive?